ago, I forgot.
He scheduled that like right after the last meeting. Yeah, that was a month ago.
I just miss uh.
No, we, we, we are not expecting Kurt.
Alright, I just missed the banter back and forth.
The weird part is, is I could have swore I heard him earlier, so it must have been someone else.
That was me.
Oh, it was probably me.
Oh, Steve's there. Great.
Hey, there you go. Yeah, but I'm not, I still, I still can't hear anything on my computer, so I'm on my phone.
Okay, well, great. Um, well, we're ready to start when you are. Just let me know.
Okay, so I will call the planning commission meeting.
This conference will now be recorded. Go ahead.
Okay, I will call this planning commission meeting, um, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty at seven thirteen. Um, I would like to start this meeting and saying it's being conducted by a teleconference pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act waiver, provided under Governor Newsom's executive order in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, I would also like to, uh, note that all cell phones, pagers, and similar devices need to be set on silent or vibrate mode or turned off unless you are an on-duty emergency responder. So we will have a, uh, a virtual, a flag salute. Ready?
Ready.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States.
United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic.
One nation.
Under God.
In the. For D and justice.
So I had to be honest with you. I had to pull my phone away from my head because everybody was not in sync.
Yeah. But the effort is there.
TV and the radio at the same time. Um, may I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Uh, Commissioner Danzinger, who is absent and excused. Commissioner Strowman?
Glad to be here.
Great. Commissioner Sarkozy?
Here.
Vice Chair Willis?
Here.
Chair Castellanos?
Here.
And then just to note, we did open the meeting at seven fourteen PM. Go ahead, Chair.
Uh, presentations, consent calendar, uh, approval of the, uh, June sixteenth meeting. Uh, any comments, questions, corrections?
Seeing none, I move that we, uh, approve the minutes of the June sixteen meeting.
I'll second that.
Uh, who seconded?
That was Mark. Commissioner Sarkozy.
Mark, okay. Okay, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Four to zero. Public hearing, administrative matters, review and discussion of Escalon's municipal code, chapter seventeen point four-two, the sign ordinance.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and this is, uh, just the item, uh, further discussing our sign ordinance, which is providing additional direction or potential amendments, uh, to the sign ordinance. The background, originally in, in two thousand seventeen, city staff discussed sign and signage concerns with the planning commission. At that time, these issues became a concern of staff after a series of events, uh, during and after the two thousand eight financial crisis. Businesses in Escalon struggled and an increase in signage occurred throughout town in efforts to attract customers. Understanding the struggle, the city exercised flexibility on the signage regulations by not taking code enforcement action on violations unless a complaint was received or the signs were a public health and safety concern. The city received multiple complaints on signage along State Route one twenty and McHenry Avenue prior to bringing signage to the commission for discussion. City staff investigated the complaints and followed up with notices to the businesses in violation of the sign ordinance. Some of the businesses, business owners did express frustrations with the city's regulations on signs, claiming that not allowing their signage prevented them from advertising, which negatively affected their businesses. The city council, uh, at that time suggested that staff review the sign ordinance, see where flexibility was appropriate, and include business owners in on the process. Staff began, uh, the ordinance review process by scheduling a sign ordinance workshop and inviting all of the businesses, three hundred and eleven of them in Escalon, to attend in efforts to gather feedback and hear their concerns regarding the city's signage regulations. Um, and so we have attached the actual, uh, current code regulations for chapter seventeen point four-two on signs. Um, it was last reviewed or adopted in two thousand five. Um, we did receive two calls. Um, we had talked to Marion Pryor regarding Escalon Covenant Church, um, but we also did receive a call from another business owner, um, just inquiring on non-conforming signs. Um, you know, wanting to inquire or make sure, you know, if we move forward with making any amendments that would affect his current signage, that we, you know, would consider either grandfathering his sign in um, or something similar to that. Um, at that time, I did notify him that, you know, we're at the beginning stages of a workshop moving forward. I did encourage him to attend the meeting, um, either in person, and I did offer teleconference as well. Um, and we will, this is obviously not something that will be, um, sl- uh, fast in moving forward on. It's something obviously that there's going to be a lot of talk and discussion about. And I do know that business owner, and so we can definitely keep them in the loop, uh, for any future meetings or future actions that the planning commission or council takes. Um, as we had discussed in the workshop, we reviewed the code. Um, staff at our level did review, um, the current side ordinance. And overall, even though it does appear, uh, maybe to be confusing, um, or maybe not as, as simple as everybody would want it to be, it does not appear to have any major flaws. Um, in the past five years, the seventeen permit applications that we have processed, where people have obtained permits, uh, for their signage, fifteen of them were approved, uh, thirteen of them approved as submitted, two of them approved after some adjustments or corrections were made, and two of them denied, uh, with options to, uh, move forward with making modifications and just not receiving them, either not moving forward with the project or, you know, no longer interested in obtaining or putting in the sign. Um, and one of them might be considered still pending. Um, areas of concern at staff level that appear to be a concern to the businesses, um, when dealing with businesses and listening to the concerns, um, are, you know, signs, what type of signs require and/or don't require a permit? Um, we do receive a lot of information, you know, that certain, certain types of signs shouldn't require, uh, a sign permit. Maybe only have the large signs or the building signs, um, uh, require a permit. These little signs that I'm putting around town are A-frame signs, shouldn't be required to have a sign permit. Um, so we have noted that, um, reviewing the prohibited signs, specifically the A-frames, banners, flags, and advertisement signs that are placed on fences, poles, walls, et cetera. Those are items that come up repeatedly. We obviously don't get very many people. For the most part, all of the, these signs, uh, permits that we have been reviewing are signs that are either on the building or are main signs, like monument signs, or signs that are actually put into the ground, um, not these signs, um, that could be easily, you know, maneuvered or moved, or perhaps only put out during business hours and then required to put away when the business is closed. Um, those type of signs. The site restriction, including limiting the number of signs allowed. Um, there are a few businesses that have expressed, um, frustration with not being able to put their signage all along either the one twenty or McHenry. And, and that's just the way our code is written, that you can have one off-site directional sign for a commercial business, um, but the, the code is written to, to prohibit the visual clutter because if every business did that, you're gonna have a lot of signs driving down the one twenty, and people are already driving fast. It's a highway. Um, and it is supposed to be regulated through Caltrans as well, so actually, a lot of the signs or all the signs that are along the highway are supposed to get Caltrans approval, um, as well as city approval. Um, but in past years, we have not been able to get Caltrans to respond, uh, when, when contacting them regarding signs. Um, materials, uh, we do have, like I mentioned in the workshop, businesses that would like to use vinyl or canopy or something like that, where it does cost them less to make them, um, or maybe isn't as durable or strong, um, fades quickly, maybe, um, they would prefer it that way. In which our code could almost support that because we also have a section on maintenance. So if your sign, you know, if we move forward with allowing a certain type of sign, whether it be a banner or such, if it's starting to look deteriorated or it's falling apart, we would still have the authority in the code to be able to contact, contact them and either tell them to take it down because it doesn't look good, um, or it needs to be replaced, or, or have them put up a new one. Um, and then, of course, non-conforming signs, um, which are the, 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 I listed it last, but it should actually be first because we do have a lot of businesses in town that have signs that have probably been up for several years. Um, non-conforming definition does say permitted. Um, I'm sure there are businesses in town that have probably been operating prior to the incorporation of the city, which was in nineteen fifty-seven. They might still have those original signs. Um, they might have a sign from the seventies or eighties. And if it's, if they went the, you know, a good route the first time and spent a lot of money and got a good quality sign installed, it might still be there and it might still be operating. And whether or not we want to establish either a permitting process to permit non-conforming size, signs, or just, uh, document them and accept them up to planning commission's recommendation. Um, if you have any other questions or like to provide any more feedback, um, this is where we could get into a little deeper discussion, perhaps provides, provide some direction. Um, as staff, we are not expecting to have the first draft be the winner. Um, we do expect that we're gonna be going through a few different drafts to try to make sure we get this right um, and get that final one adopted. Um, you know, there's no hurry. As long as we're in the process and we're moving forward and we can explore all kinds of things and, and, you know, we're, we're open to that. So please don't feel obligated that we have to have just one meeting on its amendment. Um, if, and if something is changed at staff level and we make an amendment and you want us to look further into it or do additional research, say so. This is the opportunity. We wanna do the businesses well in town. We want to see everybody succeed. Um, just let us know. That's your residence, your residence, and you're giving business to those business owners. So I would definitely, you know, uh, take that into consideration and, and let us know. And when we talk to business owners, you know, we try our best to get their ideas and, and share any thoughts that they have or concerns. And that's when we bring them to, to planning commission, when we hear that same idea, concern, or feedback repeatedly, whether it be on, you know, setbacks, building sizes, et cetera. So if you have any questions or would like any areas to further discuss, please let me know.
Mr. Willis, would you like to go first?
Well, I made notes on about ten things and, and we could go, they're basically in order, um, with this. So if, yeah, if I could run down those ten things, then that, that could be what I need to contribute. Um, number one, as far as the purpose, I see a lot of limit, minimize, reduce. I just wonder if we couldn't make it more positive, uh, you know, that we're trying to help business owners, that we're trying to facilitate welcoming facade, that we're trying to create attractive elevation. Um, you know, have it be more positive rather than negative on our part.
Okay.
I just, should I go through all of them and then, then listen to feedback?
Um, no, I mean, that, that comment, I mean, you could go through all of them individually, but I mean, at this point, we're, you know, putting all your feedback out there and we can discuss. I mean, the code can definitely be written in a way to not sound like it's regulating in the aspect of, you know, slapping someone with a stick, you know? We could definitely do that. I mean, it's, sometimes it's real difficult, uh, because they are requirements and because we're a city and, and maybe legal counsel feels like it shall, should be written a certain way so that it does have authority, but we could definitely try to work that into it as, as much as we can. Or even if the code is, is perhaps a little bit more restrictive, but whatever guidelines we end up moving forward with or checklists, we change up the language and, and, and make it more attractive or positive so that we're doesn't, it doesn't seem like we're kicking them before they're even down, you know?
Yeah. Well, and then also putting prohibited signs up at the front instead of later on. That also seems like it's, uh, turning people off rather than encouraging and saying, this is what you can do. Right away, we're saying, this is what you can't do. And, um, you know, I don't know if I got this. I think I wouldn't wanna read any farther, you know, having read that.
Okay.
Um, okay, next one, um, abandoned signs. There, the abandoned sign comes up several times and it talks about a ten-day this, or a one-year this, or a ninety-day that. It seems like there might be some inconsistency with abandoned, uh, signs. And then when does that start? Um, Dominique or Diana, if a business leaves town, do they come through city hall to say, hey, I'm going? You know, dot, see, dot, you know, see you later, and then so we can, uh, deal with them? And we know that the abandonment starts at that particular time? How do we know?
Occasionally, businesses do notify us when they're closing. They'll formally close their business license on a certain date, and that usually has legal or tax ramifications for them. They do it deliberately with backup documentation for their business. Most of the time, uh, because we're a small town, city staff catches word of mouth or we see it somewhere that a business has closed or left. Well, we'll catch it during business license renewals in December, January, when a business doesn't renew. So a small portion of the time, we are notified, but mostly not.
Yeah. So as far as assessing a fee, uh, for the removal of a sign, um, you know, if they, if they've gone to two bucks two in the meantime, chances are waiting, you know, the period, for a long period of time, we're not gonna get a hold of anybody. Um, so maybe we need to close it instead of one year, make it less, um, you know, before. Uh, there are several different places where abandoned signs are mentioned. I don't have all of them noted right here, but.
Yeah.
It just seems like we might wanna look at a different time frame.
And we can, we can definitely clean up that language. Um, the definition of abandoned sign, um, includes where the premises is vacant for a period of ninety days and the sign pertaining.
Yeah, then later on, yeah, it says one year to wait until you can take down the, the sign. And you got ninety days on the one hand, you got a year on the other.
Yeah, and then they have that ten-day period, and that ten-day period is, you know, trying to follow up with, with, I think that they look at abandoned sign being, we've contacted the property owner and have given them ten days to come and pick up the sign. And if they don't pick it up, then it becomes an abandoned sign and we're able to dispose of it. And so there is to, it does appear, uh, you know, it not, not looking over this exact that maybe abandoned sign is used in two different, uh, perspectives. And we can definitely correct that, um, or make that more clear in, in our future amendment.
Well, and like ten days, you know, with the mail having to go up to Sacramento and then go out from there, uh, we're eating up time in those ten days for mail, uh, carrying. Um, do we send it, uh, certified or request receipt, uh, you know, request, we request a receipt? Or what do we do with that?
In the past, we used to just follow up with regular letters, um, but we are, we have been experiencing that delay in mail, um, you know, in the last six months to a year, and so.
Up to ten days, maybe.
Yeah, and so now we have been, any, any type of, of letter that's being sent out as enforcement or code enforcement manner, we have been doing a return receipt and sending it out certified just to make sure it gets there.
That's good, that's good.
And, and because if these businesses have storefronts, um, you know, and we typically know that they're there and they're visiting and, and that somebody might be showing up, we, we do try to do door hangers when possible as well. That way they get notified right away.
Yeah. Okay, under owner's consent, it said that, um, let's see, this is under seventeen forty-two zero four-zero B. Uh, when US flags with real estate agent business cards are attached, are placed in front yards, and they don't ask for permission, that seems in violation. And then what if somebody gets hurt because that flag pole is tipping up out of the ground? Who's liable for that? Um, I, 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 we, I think we need to look at that. Or, or make sure that people contact city hall or something before they do something like that.
Um, in most cases, we do, um, we do get a lot of calls or, or calls from property owners confirming with us first whether they can, you know, install a flag, a flag pole on their property. Um, we do try to, to help them select a, a good area so that it's not in the way or if they're on a corner lot, to make sure that they meet that traffic view area and keep it out of that twenty-five-foot traffic view area. Um, but yeah, for the most part, if it's on their private property and something happens, um, you know, it is, it is the property owner's responsibility.
Yeah, even though we didn't know it was coming and we didn't ask for it and didn't give approval, um, we.
Well, uh, one flag is listed also on the exempt list as well, that you can have a flag, one flag pole with a flag. Um, as long as it, is it, I think it doesn't exceed a height of twenty-four feet or something like that. That, that is exempt from requiring a permit.
For the fourth of July, the Realtor who went around town putting flags in people's yards, she couldn't penetrate our artificial turf. And she put it over in a flower bed, and it was hidden to a large extent. And so I was concerned that somebody, some kid going up and down the sidewalk might not see it.
Yeah.
Uh, um, and I, and again, I will bring up the workshop thing. Um, I, it seems like people can be educated. The, the, on the front, in the background where it said that somebody was upset because his business was going to suffer, well, maybe he needs to be educated that his sign could be bigger or, or wider or taller or, and rather than out on a highway, um, it could be better at his business front, uh, if he were educated as to what he could do. And like I mentioned earlier, you know, like if, if your speed limit is a certain one, then your sign, uh, should be, uh, like no bigger, no smaller than this. And, you know, you look at the science as far as, uh, how big signs can be when you're driving past or walking past.
Yeah, and I think in that specific case, it was more on, 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 on limiting the number of signs that could be done. It wasn't so much signage, it was the off-site, uh, commercial signs, which, which are typically commercial signs only on onsite, and then only having that directional sign. But it was more, I wanna advertise my commercial business and I wanna have multiple signs. And the frustration that our, that our code didn't allow for that. Um, and that, that is something, I mean, if that, if that currently, it's, it's not allowed. If, if planning commission wants to, you know, um, allow that type of signage or allow them to have multiple signs and maybe establish a limit where they can only have three or four or so many on, on, on the one twenty or on McHenry Avenue, I mean, that's definitely something we can explore. But in that case, it was that that was prohibited in general because they were commercial signs, not, not off-site directional, and so they weren't allowed at all.
Yeah. Um, and back to the, like, having a committee, um, it could be the city will, will not be seen as the bad guy. You know, you'd have, uh, members from the community, members from business, and they're all, um, you know, trying to reach a consensus on something and, and maybe, uh, it'll be a good thing. Not, not somebody trying to say, well, he's got that, I wanna do it too. But, um, yeah, that's not a good idea because, and yeah, we like this, uh, part of it, you know?
Yeah.
Um, and I'm gonna end that. I've got some other notes, but, um, I, I don't wanna hog anything. So that's all I've got, Chairman Castellanos.
Thank you. Uh, Chairman Strowman, would you have any comments?
Actually, you're, you're the chairman, Commissioner Castellanos, I'm just the commissioner.
Yeah, I know.
You called me Chairman Strowman.
Oh, excuse me, com- excuse me, I apologize. Commissioner Strowman. I wanted to make sure I got your last name correct, okay?
I don't want to undermine your authority of the planning. Chair, chairman for the twenty twenty, twenty-one year. I think I've said enough on this topic in the, uh, in the workshop. I just, um, I'm in favor of just letting it alone for the time being. Normally, uh, when, when we have a report that, that staff, um, staff gives us, we, we're able to see what the proposed changes are. And looking through this document, I, I don't, I can't see what exactly we're changing, changing via red lines.
Yeah, so, I mean, that was done because there was such a, a gap in between the last time we spoke. So we put it out there on the businesses to obtain feedback so that our actual amendments on the municipal code, uh, wouldn't just be what staff wants or staff's recommendation, that if we received any feedback, we would have feedback included from some business owners, from planning commission. And so we did bring back that feedback from planning commission as well to make sure that that was still where planning commission was coming from since it has been a few years since we last discussed this. Um, so the next version will be redlined, and I mean, and if you're, if you're leaving it up to staff to redline it the way we think that PC would want it and, and some business owners, I mean, you give us that green light and, and we'll go ahead and do that accordingly, and then we'll throw in some items that we think might be priority or, or further discussed or ideas that we have, and, and that can be our first, our first draft. You know, we, we provided it just this way to kind of more or less reintroduce us back into this item so that we'll be moving forward with it in the future.
Uh, Diana, you were saying something?
Yeah, I was just gonna go along the lines that, uh, Dominique did, that the code seventeen four-two that's in this packet is as it currently is adopted. Staff made no changes to it. You go in the municipal code, this is exactly as it is. We were waiting to hear feedback from the businesses. We invited all those businesses tonight, hoping to hear what changes they were wanting, because that's what originally prompted this, is they had some complaints about the code. They were wanting some changes. So we were opening it to see what changes they wanted before staff started making red lines. And so this, this is as currently adopted. No changes were made.
So I guess, um, this is a challenge for, for you guys. How can we make it simple? Is there a way that we can, to, uh, reduce this down to something a little bit more simpler and easy to read? Because, I mean, we, we heard from Marion that in his review, he's still confused.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I think if we can just simplify this to, um, maybe prohibited signs and, and just address the problem children, if you will, um, as opposed to having it so strict and so rigorous, um, that it's, it, I mean, if, I'll be honest with you guys, I didn't read it at all. Um, because I started reading it and then it reminded me of building codes, and, and I just, uh, it turned me off, frankly. Um, I understand that it was written for code purposes and, and, which is perfectly understandable. But I, I think if that was handed to a business owner, um, they would just be turned off right away from it and be like, you know what? I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna deal with this. And so if there's a way that we can simplify it and water it down to just the main problem areas that we, that we see and the problem areas that were identified previously by the planning commission, I think that would be a lot more helpful, a lot easier, a lot easier to read.
Okay.
So those are my thoughts.
And like we had mentioned before, too, even if we can't get it down to being a lot more simpler code-wise, at least we would be able to have the code amended, um, you know, how, how agreed upon, and then perhaps create some type of checklist that has both your comments and Barbara's comments incorporated into it where it's more positive, helpful, um, you know, uh, trying to, to get the businesses to, to make things more attractive, but at the same time, simplifies it to where it's easy for them on a one-pager to figure out how to, how to get their sign done.
Yes, and just because we're in, we're out of the workshop and now we're in.
and now we're in the official Planning Commission meeting, I would like to go on record and state that, um, collectively, we need to work for businesses, uh, right now to help encourage them to survive, not start hitting them with additional regulations. So, just reiterating what I said in the workshop, but, uh, making sure it enters the record of the Planning Commission. That's all.
Commissioner Sarkozy?
Uh, yeah, so, um, I think in, in general, uh, you know, I agree it, it needs to be s- simpler the better, I just, even looking at the screen right now, page seventeen of thirty-eight, ah, that's a lot. Um, so, you know, I'm wondering if, you know, when I think of signs, you know, the first thing that comes to mind are the ones we see around town, you know, directional or whatever, and then, then the ones that are, you know, permanent monuments. And I wonder if that's maybe a, a way to organize it because there is such a difference between the two. I mean, you know, you're doing a monument, that's construction and other permits normally. Um, so just, just a thought about that, if that makes any, uh, any difference. Um, you know, when we talk about the other signs up and down McHenry or Escalon Belota or towards Manteca or Oakdale, um, so Caltrans, I mean, it just kind of turns the other way and they don't, even though they have jurisdiction over it, sounded like, they don't, they don't care and just leave it up to us, or? Uh, uh, what, what role do they play in that?
Diana, do you, do you mind following up on that? Do you have a better answer than I would?
Um, I'm sorry, Chair Sark- uh, Commissioner Sarkozy, I had a little bit of trouble following the question. Could you phrase it in a little bit different way?
Oh, yeah, so I'm just wondering, you know, as, uh, especially down one-twenty, up and down one-twenty before and after town, you said, someone said Caltrans hasn't responded to sign requests going up there? And so in that case, does it, Escalon has jurisdiction over that?
Along one-twenty, Caltrans has jurisdiction, so they kind of have to go through two processes. What, first, they have to get it permitted through Caltrans, but they still would get it permitted through the city of Escalon as well. We wouldn't issue a permit unless we see that Caltrans has approved it. And I think businesses have to pay a yearly or maybe a, a bi-yearly fee to Caltrans to keep their sign along the highway. Um, we don't directly coordinate with Caltrans per se, but we do like to see their approval before we approve a sign on one-twenty.
Okay, okay, um, yeah, I wish, uh, I wish there would have been a better representation of businesses, but maybe the virtual environment turned people off. Um, I certainly liked the idea of, uh, uh, you know, a face-to-face workshop. I think, I think that would have probably worked, worked better tonight. Uh, I don't know if any, we would add a better attendance, but, um, you know, in my opinion, who knows better about their business than the business owners and what they've seen work and not work? Um, so that's just more of a, a comment. Um, but then, you know, on the downside of that is, you know, sometimes when you get committees, sometimes the louder voices tend to, uh, um, are, are more vocal than the, uh, than the softer voices, and I just want to make sure everybody gets heard. Um, so, yeah, overall, I think it, things have been covered, a, a more positive, uh, spin on it and simpler, I think, is, is maybe the direction I would, uh, suggest that we, uh, we look at redlining.
I never thought, um, excuse me, uh, Chairman, um, as far as, that's why I'm being small, and we've got two highways or one highway and one, you know, thoroughfare going through town, the businesses rely on capturing the eye of those tourists, those travelers, and, and sometimes, you know, the city is lenient, and then maybe people will come because of what we have out there for them to see, but can, can Caltrans be lenient? They, they probably are not, but, but we've got a unique situation or a somewhat unique situation. We need people to stop, but we can't put up the signs that'll bring them in. Um, you know, we need to be understanding, I guess.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes.
I, I don't mean to simplify this, but it sounds to me like what staff is saying is that candidly, Caltrans doesn't really care. And, and you know what? If Caltrans doesn't really care, why should we as the Planning Commissioners, Planning Commissioners of our little itty-bitty town of Escalon, put more pressure on our businesses if the state of California doesn't care?
So you're saying we should go ahead and put up what we want because they won't give us permission if we ask? We should just do what we need to do? Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Uh, we are aware at staff level of some businesses that did have signage put up this year along the one-twenty or maybe late last year, and they were, sent a letter from Caltrans advising them that it didn't meet their standards. Um, and, and they actually did share that information, the contact that had contacted them. Um, and I did follow up and leave a, leave a few messages for that, that Caltrans employee in hopes that we would finally, you know, have a contact for signage that we would be able to work with, and I never received any call back, um, from him. Uh, but they are out there and they are looking at signs, and so one thing we do get hesitant with, especially along the one-twenty, is saying it's okay, and then Caltrans coming back and saying it's not. Um, you know, I mean, and it is another agency, so I mean, it's not necessarily our fault, but it does have a, a not good appearance if we go and allow it and then they don't or come back and say no.
I, I understand that, Dominique, but, I mean, I think Caltrans would just sometimes write a letter but not follow up on it for four or five years.
That is possible.
Uh, if, if the Caltrans employee who wrote them up can't even have the public decency to return your phone call, um, shame on Caltrans. You know, that, those, that, those are just my thoughts.
Yeah.
Well, a couple of observations that, that I've had is, um, like Commissioner, uh, Sarkozy, um, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing that we didn't get a lot of businesses showing up. We could look at it on a positive slant that, um, the sign issue is not a big issue to most businesses and that's why they did not show up. I, I would hope that's the situation as opposed to, um, you know, sticking their head in the sand and not being actively involved in something that could impact their, their business. Going back several years ago, um, when Main Street Market was actually on Main Street, we had, I think the Commission, uh, addressed, there was some issues with, uh, the grocery store was putting signs on the exterior of their building just because of the lack of windows. Is there somewhere in this ordinance that I, I had, did not, not read all, what, thirty-eight pages of this? Is there something in this ordinance that allows or prohibits, um, businesses to either display stuff on their window or on the exterior of their, uh, buildings? You know, advertising for, you know, you know, a good sale on whatever, or?
Yeah, um, so there is language in the, in the municipal code or signage ordinance regarding the windows, and roughly, um, I think in the presentation, I had said about fifty percent of your window space. Um, and then there was additional language on that that came into contact with whether or not the cashier's drawer or the employee at the cashier drawer was, was visibly, was able to be visible from the outside. And I believe, um, past staff, when we had discussions about the signage ordinance a few years ago, indicated that that was something that the police department at that time had recommended so that if they were able to drive by, you know, a store that has a cash register visible from the window, that they wouldn't block by sign so that they would be able to see into the building if there's an issue. Um, if you have a lot of windows and you're covering up all of the windows with signage and, and something happens, you know, God forbid, and, and you call nine-one-one and, and the police have to arrive, um, they wanted to have some ability to be able to see into the building. Um, and I know we do have a few businesses that like to take advantage of those windows and basically cover them all up to where you can't see anything except for through the door when it's open. Um, but there is language in there. There is also language, uh, under the prohibit signs or prohibited signs that states that, um, you know, signs, banners, flags, advertisement signs, uh, placed on fences, poles, walls, et cetera, um, are prohibited. So, so signage that's placed on walls, um, unless, unless otherwise given a, another alternative or exception in the code would be prohibited, and then the windows are supposed to be limited up to fifty percent with that cash register area being visible from the outside.
Well, the only thing that I read is, uh, under prohibited, and this was, would be, uh, on page, on page, would be under seventeen point forty-two point zero thirty prohibited signs. D, any sign painted, affixed, or attached to any vehicle or trailer, doesn't mention walls or windows, that's why I was, I mean, that, that's kind of what jumped out at me. So, you know, obviously that, you know, you, you know, so it's-
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of more or less, that one that specifically for letter D is, is, looks like, yeah, it's specific to vehicles or trailers. Um, so that would probably more or less be used for like our mobile food vendors. Would that be correct, Diana?
Mobile food vendors are the ones on trailers? Um, we've had some businesses that have trailers and advertise their business on it, um, as a method of advertising. I would say the ones on vehicles are kind of more like their wall signs because their business is a truck and the, the side of the truck is kind of the wall of their business. I think it, it really does apply to businesses who advertise on a trailer.
Okay.
Under letter H, there's wall, so it's specifically mentioned as a prohibited-
Yeah, but that, but that, but that's on public, that's upon public highways or private streets or public right-ofways. I'm talking about, you know, you drive into a business and then you have your, your business, then you plaster it on the wall. That, I, I just, because I remember that was a really, really hot topic and that's kind of what prompted the Planning Commission or staff to, to, to look at the sign ordinance back, you know, in the early two thousands.
I think the current sign code really encourages permanent signs. So when it talks about the type of allowed signs, you have ground signs, which are like your monument signs, wall signs, roof signs, and they're all, uh, when you get into the material section, they're all permanent construction. So I think, um, we see it a lot on gas stations, they put up the beer, the cigarette signs, they're kind of paper or vinyl, temporary, um, they're not allowed because it's not a permanent sign. It's not a constructed sign like a ground sign, wall sign, or a roof sign, wall sign. And so I think that's where they're not allowed, is they're, they're not one of the permanently constructed signs. And, and under temporary signs, commercial messages aren't really allowed. You can have a non-commercial message as a temporary sign, uh, but not a commercial message. Those need to be permanent signs.
Okay, so let's stop, I don't mean to interrupt you for, uh, a minute, Chairman, but let's talk about quick serve for a second. So, he's, has a sign out there right now because there was a million-dollar winner in the California Lottery. And if I'm passing through town and I see that millionaire made here, I may stop and think, you know what, I'm going to go in there and play the lottery. But by the current state of the Escalon Municipal Code, that's not permitted, correct?
Temporary signs. I mean, I guess it would be a temporary sign. Is he leaving it up indefinitely or is he going to put it up for thirty days and then take it down?
No, it's up there permanently. And so the California Lottery system is going against our municipal code because anytime that there's a winner, they don't put them up temporarily, they put them up there permanently. So, I mean, I'm not arguing with you, Diana, by any means. I'm just saying, those are the kinds of examples that really is a millionaire made here sign really bothersome to, to people as they pass through town. I, I don't think it clutters anything, but, um, I just-
Yeah, and like Dominique said, fifty percent of the windows can be, can have signs. You can put window signs, uh, up in fifty percent of your windows. So, I mean, if they have one California Lottery sign, it doesn't, uh, put it over the threshold of the fifty percent. If you have thirty signs in your windows, maybe you're pushing over the fifty percent at that point.
Well, he doesn't have it on his window, but I don't want to say anything more else because I don't want him to have to take it down, so.
Well, don't worry, we're not, we're not moving forward on anything unless it's health and safety right now.
Awesome.
I, I don't have anything else to add on, on this, um.
I have a couple of thoughts, if it's okay?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm thinking of specific things like, like, um, Big Boy. The sign is still up, even though Big Boy is not there. Uh, I don't know how much time since they left the building, but something like that, I wonder if, uh, the previous owner could be contacted and maybe something like that could be donated to the historical museum. But that leads me to the thought, how much room does the city have to store signs if they take them down? If they incur that cost or they, uh, you know, anytime they confiscate a sign that's, uh, not compliant, does the city have a lot of room to store signs like that?
So we'd have to ask Justin about that. We, we would typically have them kept over there. No, I'm kidding, if we had to, if we had to hold the sign, we'll, we would find a place for it. Um, specifically with Big Boy, um, they actually just closed Esro on that, on that building, uh, this week. And so they are, yeah, they are going to be moving forward with the market that's going in there. And we are in contact with that prior business owner. Um, and so we can reach out to them and ask if they'd be willing to donate that sign. But I think for the most case, because they still owned it and because it was a business that had been there for so long, um, you know, we, we weren't pressing them to, to get rid of that sign because everybody's used to it and it's been there. But, but now it, it is time to be moved, especially since somebody's moving forward with it. So we could definitely contact them and ask if they'd like to donate it to you.
And, not to me, but-
Well, yeah, the Historical Society.
The Paws, uh, built business, went out of business, and they weren't here a long time, so the sign doesn't have significance like Big Boy would.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, it's still up.
It is, uh, yes. Um, and I think we have that, that, that delay in there because in, in most cases, I mean, you're, you're typically, I mean, and Escalon is different, and maybe that goes back to where Commissioner Strowman is talking about how we're, you know, small and unique and we have a different need than other cities, where other cities might have a quicker, uh, pickup on getting another person to rent into that location. So maybe the sign gets, you know, swapped out pretty quickly or within that ninety days before it's abandoned, somebody moves in in the three months that they've been exited.
Yeah.
Yeah, where maybe it's longer for us. Um, we do, I believe we do have a business that's moving forward with moving in there as well.
Oh, okay.
Diana, have they, have they applied for their business license yet?
Yes, they have, they're moving through the process to go in there. And so that's typically what happens, like Dominique said. Um, staff isn't very enforceable of the abandoned sign rule. If a business goes out, their sign pretty much stays up until a new business comes in and puts a new sign in over it. It's just not a section of the code that we've been very diligent in enforcing. Um, we have other pressing things that we take care of first. Um, so yes, the new business is going to go in there and I'm sure they'll change the sign as soon as they open.
And I think it goes along on the property owner too. I mean, you know, they're having to go up there or hire somebody to go up there on those bigger signs to maybe take it down, and that's an additional expense, especially if they're not collecting lease money or rent money on the location. And so if they've got another tenant going in there and they're correcting the rent, they're probably more open and, and more likely to go ahead and give- open, and, and more likely to go ahead and get that completed for the new business coming in as well. And so, if we can accommodate that, you know, that's a, that's a small thing that, that at staff level, we're willing to do, as long as it's, like you said, temporary, ninety days, three or four months. I mean, the, the Big Boy being the exception, because it was here for so long, um.
Yeah.
It's definitely gonna be different seeing a new sign there.
I also think, and, and that's great about Paws, uh, getting, uh, repurposed, but I also, uh, I also think that a, if, if we use, uh, Paws, for example, you know, I think, even though the, the suite may be empty, uh, I think the Paws sign up there with an empty building looks better than, uh, when you take down the sign and you just see the dirt outline of what it's still said, and it looks abandoned.
And that might be something that the property owner is also maybe not wanting to see as well, having it blank, where at least it looks like it's full, even if the building's empty.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other comments?
Nope.
No.
Nothing further.
Nope, all good.
All right, so, uh, at staff level, I mean, we're gonna review your comments, listen to the tape, go over these items, the ones that are, you know, writing down, I'll go through them, is, you know, from Commissioner Willn- uh, Wel- uh, Willis, talking about, you know, perhaps getting that language to be more positive, helpful, to where, um, re- uh, residents or business owners are more interested in, in accommodating it, or following the regulation. Um, moving prohibited signs, not at the beginning, so it doesn't, doesn't, uh, turn away people from even wanting to read the ordinance. Um, addressing the language regarding abandoned signs, making it more consistent. Um, the section on owner's consent, clarifying that as well. Um, we've talked about perhaps doing a committee of some sort, where we get some businesses involved. Um, I'm just going through my notes, and then we have, you know, making it more simple, um, providing additional clarification, or maybe we separate it out and look at like directional or temporary signs versus permanent signs, which are the monument signs, ones that are temporary or construction, um, as Commissioner Sarkozy mentioned, and, um, looking at, um, for the most part, those are the items I have, and then, let me look through my notes from the workshop. I can incorporate whatever notes I have in the workshop, and we could make a, uh, redlined version to bring back to the Planning Commission in the, in a future meeting, um, as a first run. Um, so we won't set it up for a public hearing, we can still provide advertisement to business owners, um, and we'll work through doing some type of committee as well, uh, regarding it. Um, you know, and I'm almost thinking, like, maybe we come up with a first draft, and ho- and hopefully, in the first, or maybe second draft that we're reviewing it, we'll have those business owners, uh, you know, maybe volunteer, since they're showing up to the meeting, maybe we'll get a couple more to show up at the next run, um, to, to be the ones to get on the committee, or provide their feedback. Um, we can look into that as well. Um, is there any other items that anybody's looking at? But definitely just simplifying, simplify, simpli- simplify, is what I'm hearing over and over again.
Yeah, good recap, Dominique.
I, I would, uh, implore my fellow commissioners, um, that when you go into a local business, kindly tell, explain to them what we're looking at, and ask them to, to pay attention to, um, the city website, and we are desperately seeking their feedback. Um, so if you go into a business, just tell them, hey, can you keep an eye on this? And when it appears, just make sure we have your comments.
Okay, sure. Um, you know, and I wanted to follow up on some comments that Chair Caslianos had made earlier, just to put it out there. Um, he had commented about, you know, the, the lack of, you know, we put out these postcards inviting everybody to the workshop, and we didn't get a lot of involvement, or public comment or feedback, attendance from the businesses. Um, and so, maybe most of them, you know, feel like, oh, this isn't something that affects me, and for the most part, I do have to say, especially in light of the COVID situation, and I, and hopefully, it's not like this forever, but we are moving into a different type of business atmosphere, where a lot of these businesses, not only because of technology advances and such, and the way online ordering and online businesses work, uh, but COVID helped that along as well. Any of these businesses that, from, from our, from my perspective, uh, watching a lot of these local businesses and following them on, on public atmospheres or social media, for the most part, they have a website, and they do some, you know, postings on Facebook and, and, um, Instagram, but, but having to close down to the public for everything that's happened in the last few months related to COVID, it really made a lot of the small businesses in town, um, really, really step up in terms of making their, their websites more interactive, doing a lot more advertisement, working together as businesses to attract customers, and share customers, and do things together to, to help each other, especially in the, the Main Street area. Um, I, I thought that was really, uh, great, and, and I know that we are moving in more technological advances, where it does appear like the businesses that have probably been in town a little longer, um, you know, maybe don't use the internet, or use social media as much as these other businesses do. Um, it is something you have to keep up on. I mean, I, I have to admit, if, when I have to be in charge of a, of a city Facebook page, I'm not thrilled. It, it's a lot of work, to keep up with every single thing that's going on, and to keep it up to date all the time. Um, if you want to let everybody know everything that we're doing. Um, but I think that that serves a lot, you know, into that atmosphere, too, where we do have a mixture. We have businesses in town that are utilizing more social media, more, uh, maybe window signage, those type of things, not, not having to do signage, signage per se, and so maybe that's why they're not involving themselves, but then we also have businesses that maybe aren't as internet savvy, and maybe feel like they would probably need to hire somebody to keep up that, and maybe aren't able to put the money towards something like that. So, signage, you know, uh, on the highways, or out in the open, or in other areas, uh, feels more appropriate to them, and I mean, it's a big thing for change, too. I mean, the, the, the newer generations, obviously, are more into it, and I myself like to do everything in writing, try to avoid a computer any way, way, shape, or way I can. Um, I like paper, I like writing. I, I've had to force myself into using computers and typing, and just to keep up with work, and that's about it. I like taking notes and, and stuff, but, yeah, we are moving into that as well, where, where for some businesses, this ordinance doesn't matter to them at all, because they're just on a different level when it comes to advertisements. They have different avenues that they're exploring and utilizing, so, I just wanted to put that out there, that that is something that I've seen, uh, especially in the last few months.
It'd be interesting to, uh, hear from, and this is really diving deep, but from business owners, you know, what their thoughts are on, you know, okay, if I, if, if I was able to put a sign in such a location, what their expectation would be for increased business? Um, you know, just, it, it, I don't, just, just a thought, because, you know, I imagine that at some point, you throw signs out, and it doesn't increase business.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's just, uh, individual preference, but, I mean, we could definitely, we could definitely inquire with a few businesses. I mean, we, we do business licenses, you know, frequently, and we could definitely put that out there over the next few months, asking everybody that's come in, how they feel about it, get some additional feedback.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it was just a, it was just kind of an off-the-cuff, cuff thought, I don't, I don't know if we need to, to ask them, it's just kinda curious.
It doesn't hurt.
It is interesting watching how different businesses are adapting, like restaurants developing takeout and, and, uh, and delivery. Uh, you have one gym that can have, uh, exercises outdoors, you have another one that can't, so they close, and, you know, it's interesting watching, see, in, in this small town, maybe, maybe we're not gonna be hurt as much, uh, because we can adapt, you know?
Yeah. Okay, well, does anybody have any other feedback?
That was a good recap, Dominique.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was very good.
Great.
Lots of notes, lots of handwritten notes, right?
Yeah. And of course, what?